Order the work session. We'll be talking about five-year budget projection discussion, and then also the council chamber. Turn it over to City Manager Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As promised, we are keeping this issue on the forefront as a priority. We're here to talk today about alternative revenue streams. But before we get into that, I just want to recap what our last work session in March was. We basically went through that five-year projection and showed where we would end up in fiscal year 2027, which is about $2 million, roughly $2 million short, could be a little more, a little less. The things that we heard from consensus-wise from the council is we don't want to reduce services. We want to keep the same services that we have, and to move forward with looking at the, starting the process of looking at alternative revenue streams to help bridge that gap. So with that, the objectives of today, kind of we've got what are other cities doing? We've got a list of what other cities are doing in terms of fees that they're charging, and also operations levies. One thing that I didn't put on here, but our target amount with this, whether it be through reductions, whether it be through a combination of an operating levy or an additional fee, or some form of that is two to two and a half million. We'll go over the proposed city service fee, what that would look like added on to the utility bill, what the methodology is for that, what we used as a methodology. Talk about levy, the timing of the levies, most likely the need for a consultant with that, our partners, what that looks like for them, and then lots of questions, comments. Please ask questions as we're going, and then at the end, maybe get a little direction on where we want to pursue this. We're in the infinite stages of looking at this. We've spent some staff time putting these things together, but we need to dive down into the details and really fine-tune everything before we move any further. So with that, that's what we hope to, hope to give you today. And let's start out with what, what other cities are doing. You can see from the list, there's, and what we did was just took, pretty much, we have a big list, but we took the, the folks that we usually use for comparators, or that are kind of on this side of the Willamette Valley, and up north, down south, here, there, and everywhere. And you can see from the list what people are doing. These fees sometimes change. For instance, Dallas, their, their $4.95 per account covers their fire and police, but that's moving to $1,250, I believe, in July 1. They have a very similar situation that we do. It's about a $2 million deficit that they're, they were trying to, to make up for. So you can see what, what folks are doing with that. Corvallis, they've got quite a bit on there. And there's, Corvallis actually has more fees than just that for public safety. They've got library parks and several other fees that go with that. So, and then the next sheet in this shows who's got operating levies around us and what they're used for. Again, we didn't dive down into what exactly, what, what the valuation of the levies were, but you can see what they are there as they, as they move through each of those. We're holding on. We have technical difficulties. Did we make it? Okay, perfect. So this is, back to the levies, you can see what those look like, you know, and, and this doesn't include districts, you know. It does include some that are on our list. It doesn't show here. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what, what other cities are doing at this point. There's many more. I think if you look at the City Albany's website when they did their utility fee, they, I think they said there was over 50 different cities in the state doing that. We didn't dive that deep into it. I just wanted to kind of keep it fairly localized until we go any, any deeper than that. So with that, we can move on into what we're calling city service fee. Didn't attach it to anything, didn't attach it to say, hey, this is for law enforcement, this is public safety, or this is for the library, or this is for parks, or whatever that was. It was basically just, again, we're in the infinite stages, and we can determine what that looks like as we move through, should this be something that the city council wants to, to move forward with. Also, remember, keep in mind our target amount, whether, again, that's through reductions, whether it's through a combination of levy fee and reductions is going to be that two, two and a half million dollar range. And, and the one thing with that, and Brandon and I have talked about this extensively, you know, that gets us to even, right? So that, that doesn't, that doesn't allow for any growth in the future as we move through, because this is a five-year forecast. So that leaves us very stagnant to shoot for that dollar amount. But that is what the dollar amount is that we need to, to break even at that point. So. With the city service fee methodology, we, we looked at a couple of different cities. Albany was probably the easiest to get to. There's 100 ways to do this. You know, you can, you can pick a multitude. What we, what we used is what's called recommended meter equivalent. Basically, you go in and you use the 5/8 by 3/4 inch meter, which is our standard residential meter, and you use that as your base, right? So that's your one. That, that's one equivalent. Excuse me. And then from there, it just jumps up. And it's all based on rate of flow in your meters, and, and ignore the varies up there. That's just a holdover from the, the next slide that, that we moved through. But that's, that's what we based the methodology on, was that. And we went through, had staff go through and figure out how many meters we have. And the next slide will show you a little bit more in what that looks like. This is a $5 fee on the city services, or the city, city bill for each individual meter account, except for multifamily. What we did with multifamily is calculated how many doors there are on apartments, so you're not hitting them with a meter charge. And that, that's how Albany does it, too. Most of these apartment complexes have, excuse me, about a two-inch meter. Some have a three, but most are two to one and a half. So if you think about an apartment complex with 30 units, and you're trying to, hang on a second, I'm choking. Too much pressure? No, no, no pressure. Just a dry throat. I got allergies really bad. So, back to the multifamily, you would, you would ended up charging an apartment complex with 30 units, basically $25 a month. So it really doesn't equate. So what they did is they said, hey, we're going to do by door. Albany did it a little bit different. I kept it at the same rate as a single family. They reduced that by a little bit. I think their fee is nine, what was it, nine something for residential? And their, it's back here somewhere. And then they used $7.20 for multifamily. And the reason they did that is smaller units, potentially less water usage. You could do it a number of ways. You could reduce that by, you know, we could come up with a methodology to reduce each individual apartment, basically take the square footage of an apartment, or a bunch of apartments, average it out, and what's a average square footage of a house, and do the comparison there that way. Or you can just do it by door, since they would receive the same service on this as, as what a single-family resident would use. So you can see what that generates, about $540,000, $48,000 a year. I also want you to keep in mind that this is, you know, this is rough at this point. This is not nailed down. So if you were to charge $5, you know, maybe, maybe you get that much. We would want to drill into this a little bit more and get some more information. But it's going to be within, I would say that there, it's probably 90 to 95% accurate on what you would get there, what you could expect to get for a revenue stream on $5 a month. Any questions on how we came up with that, or what we're doing there with that? Okay. And then the next three slides basically show you what, what, if you jump it up to 10, and I'm just using round numbers here. We don't, I mean, there, there's no magic formula to this. I think it was more of an exercise in, in what can we get, what, what dollar value would we receive by each of these different fees? And you can see that a $10 service fee gets you over $1 million, based on the methodology that we're using there. And moving into the $15, while you move up to 1.6 and change. And then, of course, at $20, you're almost $2.2 million. Again, I'd say somewhere between 90 and 95% accuracy with what we've done so far on this. We would need to vet out exactly. We've got a few more things to do. There's a few outliers, and I didn't want to spend the staff time at this point to, to drill down into this until we knew exactly what, and if we wanted to move forward with it. So we'll get some consensus moving forward on that. Any questions on what, what a utility, what a fee? Brandon and I have to keep correcting each other, a fee on the utility bill would look like. I mean, there's a couple of things that, you know, resolution-wise, I've read resolution from one city where one of the questions that Brandon threw at me is, how do we collect? What's, what's the mechanism if somebody doesn't pay, right? So the one city that I did look at, it, it's all attached to your water bill, right? So they take and they will discontinue your water service, just like you would on the utility bill. That doesn't mean we have to do that, but that's one, one method of doing it, because there really is no other teeth to this, per se, if you don't do it that way. So that is the, what, what a potential city service fee would look like moving forward. And again, there's lots of cities that do that. And based on conversations that we've had over the last several weeks, I believe there'll probably be more that continue to do that, that pop up on the radar. So. With that, we can go into local option levy. I'll let Brandon run through this.
So what we pulled together for a local option levy is, again, similar to what Ron said, the caveat here is that this is, you know, 90 to 95% accurate. We got a list from the county of, of property within city limits that has assessed property taxes. And so we are using that list to, to base some of this, this forecasting and modeling on. So I will throw that caveat out there as we go through this. Similar to the, the fee on the utility bill option, we've broken this down into different dollar amounts. And we've, we've set kind of a $1 million, $2 million, $3 million generation, revenue generation in order to demonstrate what each of these would look like. So for example, at, if we were to say we need to generate $1 million in revenue, you're looking at a tax rate of about 70 cents per thousand on assessed value, per $1,000 of assessed value on a property. The average cost per year on a residential property with a $221,000 assessed valuation is $155 and change each year, which boils down to about $13 per month, if you were to take that 155 and divide by 12. One of the, one of the things that we have to consider with a local option levy is based on tax law. Excuse me, apparently I'm going to do the same thing Ron did. We have to consider the fact that any new taxes can impact what we consider, what we call compression. Compression happens when Measure 5 says we cannot tax more than $10 for general government services per $1,000 of real market value. Once we start getting into that, into that calculation and figuring out where everything lands, there's a potential that the levies being assessed on properties in, inside city limits are at a point then where compression would start to increase. These scenarios assume that the fire district's levy passes in May. Obviously, that's still up for, up for debate. But looking at what compression would look like for us, we, as a city, trying to generate $1 million, would really need to set a, a target of $1,136,000, because we would be losing $136,000 to compression. So that's what is built into that 70 cent per thousand rate, is assuming that the compression would bring us down to $1 million in actual revenue generation. The other taxing districts, and, and compression impacts the local option levies out there first, before it starts to impact the permanent rates. The other local option levies out there in this scenario is the county with their public safety, or public, yeah, public safety levy, and then assuming the fire district again, right? So as a result of a local option levy on our side, the, those two entities would lose a combined $123,000 in addition to what they may already lose in compression from their own rates. To generate a $2 million revenue line, we'd be looking at a, at a rate of about $1.43 per thousand. That's about 318 when you round, per year to the average household, or about $26 per month. The city loses $317,000 to compression, and the other taxing entities, 226,000. The more, the higher we go on that levy, the more the compression is going to affect us, because it's, it is a proportional impact. So if our levy, for example, is 50% of the total levies out there, we're going to lose 50% of the revenue before the others do. And then lastly, at a $3 million revenue generation, you're looking at a, a tax rate of about 200, or $2.19 per thousand. That equates to about $485 a year, or $40 a month for an average household. The city loses $538,000 in compression approximately, and the other taxing entities, $319,000. There's some pros and cons, and Ron certainly covered some of that for the fee on the utility bill. Some pros to a levy is the levy funds increased as assessed value increases annually. So every year, we assess value increases 3% a year at a maximum amount. So our revenue stream would continue to increase with that if it is a local option levy. That's a difference compared to a fee on the utility bill where that's a hard dollar amount, right? And so any increase we get is based on number of services, but otherwise, the revenue generation there doesn't change unless you change the fee. The other pro is the community gets a say through a vote. A local option levy has to be approved by voters. You'll notice, if you're reading ahead, that I also listed that as a potential con in this scenario. And it's not so much that it's a con that they get to have a say, but you have to, there's a vote when it's initially implemented, and then there's a new, a renewal vote every five years if you can decide to continue that levy. So every five years, this is potentially on the, on the ballot again for renewal. Additionally, on the con side, there has to be a consideration that if we put this out there and, and the community says no, where, where do we go from there, right? Because at that point, you've, you have asked the community for their input, and they've given you that input. And if that goes down, then we have to figure out, how are we going to still meet what we need to do as far as a financial bottom line, where, what are we going to reduce in order to get there? The last thing that we actually thought of today that we didn't get to put on here, something that we are seeing this fiscal year is a reduction in actual property taxes being paid. The delinquency amount is increasing this year. We're not entirely sure what is driving that. Certainly in the economy, there is some concern in the, in that, in the economy as to what the long-term looks like. There is still a possibility that some of this is, folks are spreading that out and making payments three over, you know, can make three individual payments over a year, or do them all at once and get a 3% discount. We won't know that until May. But what I can tell you right now is, revenue generation in property taxes this year, the projection says we're down a quarter million dollars, $250,000 for the year. $250,000.
City of Lebanon only.
City of Lebanon only. And we are seeing that increase each month, which tells me folks aren't paying those property tax bills potentially, and that a delinquency rate that we usually set at about 4% is increasing over time. So that is another concern, that if you do go out for a levy, that is something that will impact that levy as well. If they're not paying their original property tax bill, they're not going to pay this component either, potentially. One of the things Ron talked about in the objectives for the day was the timing of those levies. So these things take a lot of prep work, and there is a legal process that has to be followed for implementing a levy. It's a little more expansive compared to a fee on the utility bill, but as far as the timing is concerned, we have to start filing, the process, the filing process 81 days prior to the election, in which we're going to put this on the ballot potentially. So if, for example, you're going out in June, in November, you are looking at the council making some sort of action in June or July in order to make it through the time processes as required by the state. That process doesn't include the time then necessary to meet with our partners and to prep, you know, what the levy might look like, the dollar amount, what we're looking to generate. So there's some substantial time involved in generate, in creating a levy, if that's the route that, that we decide to go. One of the conversations that we've had recently is that the partners are a critical component to this, right? And those partners would be groups like, like Lynn County, the Board of Commissioners, Sheriff's Office. They have levies of their own. You need their political and structural support for something like this, because this will obviously impact them as well. So they need, they will want to know what the impact is going to be to them, and, and they will have to decide if that's something that they can take on as well. You'd also have partners like the Lebanon Fire District, because they will, they will be impacted by a potential levy. The Lebanon School Board and the, the school district itself, because while they don't compete for our, our tax limitations, because they have their own pot, there are some political concerns there about if they try to go out for a levy of their own, and timing-wise, you know, because the community is like, we're not, we don't want to do all of these all at once, if they need, and any funds for facilities, any bond funds. So all of these people have, we have to have these conversations with to ensure that we're being good stewards, we are being good partners in the community, because that's really what we're all here for as well. The last one is a need for consultants. So, you know, we can certainly dive into what the figures look like, the numbers and, and stuff like that. But there is a whole world outside of just, you know, what are the dollars associated with this? You do have marketing needs, you have community forums, you have survey potentials, so that you try to figure out, you know, what, what would we attach this to? What is it that the community wants to pay, potentially pay additional money for? What's the important service in their mind, right? What are the political impacts as far as, you know, what can you and can't you do as an organization? So there, there is a need for us to bring in consultants potentially, if this is the route we go, in order to ensure that we are doing things the right way, and that we are getting the most, the most buy-in overall.
Questions on that, on where we would be with the levy? What that would look like?
Just so I understand, the, the cost per month on these levies that you're putting, is that a net or a gross? I, the compression part kind of escapes me. Is, if we, if we charge $1,298, do we get $1 million?
Yes. If we, if we charge $1,298, we're going to, we would see.
So that takes into consideration the compression part. Okay, I just want to make sure.
So, so one of the other things that, so there's, there's multitude of ways to do this as well, right? So you can do a combination of a, a fee on your utility bill with a levy. You could, you know, in fiscal year '28, the Library and Justice Center general obligation bond comes off. I think that was 1.6, 1.6 million. So you're, you're looking at kind of somewhere in that same area. So maybe, maybe then a levy is more palatable, and maybe in the short term, you're looking at some kind of a utility, a fee on your utility bill. I mean, I'll get that right at some point. To where you're stop gapping that, and we're getting to that point, and squeak into '28 and see if, if a levy would pass. That's one option. Again, timing of this, you know, there's other agencies that are going to go out for levies. So we want to be positioned well for our organization, and not, not step on somebody else's toes as well. So there's a, there's a bunch of ways to do this. It's just, what is the best way?
So are we, are we trying to decide between a fee or a levy?
I don't think you have to decide between one or the other. If you, you could choose one or the other, but you could also do a combination of.
Combination.
Yeah. One, I'll give you an example. One, one discussion that Brandon and I have had was, if you did a, a fee on the utility bill right now to get you out to '28, to, to basically make sure you got to fiscal year '28, and then that's when you went out and you said you can do one of two things. You can either sunset your utility, or your fee on your utility bill at that point, or you could leave it in place and do a smaller operations levy. And we are using fiscal year '28, because I think it might be a little more palatable if something was coming off and it was more of a wash than it was extra. But that's just us talking. So I, I think we need some guidance from, from this body before we dig too much deeper. And keep in mind, the timing is, is critical, especially on the levy piece. The, the fee, we can do all that internally, and we can have another work session if, if that's the route we chose to go. And we can dig into different elements of it and make sure that we get it nailed down just right. It's, and that, that can all be done internally. So, but the levy, there, there's some, there's some timing, and it's, you know, you look at it and you go, well, we've got a year and a half. But really, in, in talking to some other agencies, it's, the more time you put invest upfront, the better off you are, and the more successful you'll be, because you want to have a good messaging. And you're probably going to, I mean, people have done town hall meetings, and I would suggest that you probably do so on, on either of these, if you did it, so that you can have more open communication with the public about why this is going the way it is going. So that's kind of where we're at. We're looking for a little bit of feedback and answer questions, and see, see, see what the appetite is for either. If neither, then I guess the, the question is, what's next?
What's the, what's the overhead on doing a levy? Do we, do we have an idea of how much it costs to actually do the, the, all the prep work, consultants, all that?
I don't have a cost, but I'm going to guess you're going to be somewhere in the $75,000 range by the time we're done. And that's just a guess based on, on one, one agency we talked to and what they use their consultant for. I mean, we could use a consultant for, you know, they, they've created their own websites for a levy. You know, there's a lot of rules that go with it, and we're going to need somebody to guide us through that and make sure. It, it also involves, you know, like Brandon said, our partner agencies, and making sure we're going to have to reach out, and, and, you know, we can reach out, but you guys as a body need to be reaching out to our other elected officials and boards and whatnot, too. So it, it's going to involve everybody to do that.
Well, I don't see the math working to pick one or the other of these. It almost has to be a combination, unless I'm missing something to get us to the end. If, I don't think anybody's going to buy off on a, $20 fee is pretty intense, especially after 3, 3%, we just put on. And I understand the timing thing, but none of these math to make it so that what I think this body wants is covered yet. I want, I want the jail open. Never made any, never pulled any punches on that. And the math I do, it's a combination of these, or we don't get there.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, let's, let's just say, for instance, if you want to, and, and that's why we showed the 3 million, right? So that, that's what it's going to take to get the jail open. Some combination of that, whether you split that levy in half and you do a $15, $10 bill on your utilities. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, that's, that's going to be an uphill climb, right there.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to say I agree with Dave. It probably has to be a combo of the two. I know that significant effort has already been made by the directors and by everybody in the room to kind of reduce our budget already in-house for next year. So we're coming at that 2 million with understanding that reductions have already kind of been made for this next fiscal year. So I do appreciate that that work's already being done, right, in the proposed. So also, I guess, we're just at the point where we're going to need some of these tools, likely both, to continue to grow the city in the future. So what the number is, I'm absolutely open for discussion. So what the number is, I'm absolutely open for discussion on, but I do think we probably need to explore both, and I don't see how we wait till twenty-twenty-eight, but I'm interested in everybody else's thoughts.
Yeah, I, I, twenty-twenty-eight feels, and it's, it's not a long ways out, let's face it, the way time goes.
No, it's not.
It's not timing-wise, but I think the first comfortable time we could get to it would, would make more sense. Maybe twenty-twenty-six is, I don't know. I'm, I'm not saying what that is. But, and it's, it's gonna, let's face it, we've already heard, we've got, I've gotten feedback, oh, they just need to, I understand we've cut. We weren't, I'll defend us not cutting anything else, but this is gonna cost our people and we need to sell that to them. We need to make sure that we know that what they're getting for it and that they're behind it, and kind of to understand if they're not, what the consequences are, right?
And, and there's, there's a lot of messaging that, once we've figured out a direction, you can do presentations at Rotary Chamber, all, all these different things that, that we can do to get that message out. Town halls, you can develop flyers and, you know, I've looked at other, what other cities have done. And so I would suggest that we do that, so that people have a good feel for what's, what's coming, why, the why, not just, and what we've done and what, what it means to services. So we can do that part. I think that, the, the big question for us is, you know, twenty-twenty-seven is when we're upside down. So we've used twenty-eight, so we've used the twenty-eight assuming that, hey, we're gonna have to do something stopgap in between there, if that was truly what we wanted to do. If we wanted to go sooner than that with an operating levy of some sorts, you know, we'll have to make some decisions at some point. What is, is it, is it for public safety? Is it going to be for, you know, because the, the things in your, your general fund are library, senior center, police department, and parks. And so those are the things that you could essentially use for an operating levy. And so the decision's gonna have to be made, what's the best one to, to try and, and, and get a levy for? So we'll need to have that discussion at some point as well, and, and what people think. I don't think we have to make a decision today. That's not what, that's not what this is about. I want it on everybody's kind of priority, because it is a priority. It needs to be fixed. It's fixable, this is all fixable. It's just, there's gonna, if we do it right and we message it right, I think we're definitely not gonna make everybody happy, but we can at least have a good message as to why this has happened. And if you look across the state, this is happening in almost every community right now, and every district. This is not just Lebanon, this is not something that we, you know, the city of Lebanon, wow, you were fiscally irresponsible, that, that's not what this is. This is costs overrunning what revenues are for property taxes. And so with that, there has to be a new mechanism until the state can step in and, and which I don't look for them to do.
Well, and to that point, it's very clear that other cities are, it's not that we're, we just haven't implemented any of these tools yet. Other cities clearly have, so.
I actually feel, after looking at it, we're behind the eight ball a little bit.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and looking at when some of these other cities implemented, we're, we probably should have looked at this.
Two years ago.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, we didn't have a five-year forecast two years ago, so we do now, and we know, we can see that.
From a timings perspective, just to, to kind of talk to what you were, what you were saying, councillor, is, you know, with a levy, the run-up because of the process is gonna take a lot longer, so you could, from today, you could potentially look at a May election, May twenty-five, the, then you could start generating that revenue in the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. And if you try to go for the November, November of twenty-five, then you're automatically pushing into the twenty-twenty-seven fiscal year. So the, the local option levies certainly take a lot more time to spin up because of the election component. The fee on the utility bill can certainly go a lot faster, because that's a, a council action potentially, but there's still some, some messaging and some conversation with the community to ensure that, you know, this is something that is a palatable, a palatable means potentially. So those, as far as timing, that's what you're looking at probably is, I, I don't see us doing a whole lot in time for twenty-twenty-six. You're probably looking at the twenty-seven fiscal year.
Well, I don't think, I don't feel any disagreement, at least amongst us, that we have, we have to, we have to do the fee. We, we have no option really, do we?
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we need to back that up. As you said, we need to back that up with the levy too.
Absolutely. So we need to decide what we can cover with that fee that's comfortable and what we think we can sell a levy for and what we want it to cover.
Just had to get reminded when the, the fire levy's going through in November, and that's gonna be an indicator on success of a city levy.
Yeah, we, we should know that here, once the election, May.
I think it's, we should know in like four weeks' time or less, what that looks like.
But regardless of that, the city services fee, I got the name right, that is an action of council, correct?
Yes, yes.
Completely, and obviously we will hold town, like listening sessions or public, I assume, but that is something we would own. And I'm very much in favor of trying to lessen the hemorrhaging of the two million over the next, over this next year, and would really like to see something happen before the end of the year when it comes to something like that, so.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
The fee would not wipe out cutting services, right?
I think we would, as, as per usual, we would, we would continue to look at, you know, efficiencies amongst the organization. Are there other things we can do? We have taken a sizable stab at it, right? We've, we've covered that in, as far as budget's concerned, in a proposed budget, but that doesn't mean that, that that review would stop.
No.
To see if there's other things we can do.
That process. Yeah. So we, we can do the messaging piece, we can put together, there, there's some good examples of what other cities have done, you know, as far as the messaging. And then, you know, we can have town hall meetings, you know, where we invite the public in and, I'll, I'll just be honest with you, it's gonna, there, it's, it's not gonna be a fun process, but we, we're, we're at that crossroad, so.
I don't think we're here for fun anymore.
No, no.
We gotta solve some problems.
Yes, and, so with that, so what would you like to see? I mean, you know, I, I'm, you could do, you know, we could get somewhere in the ten to twelve, thirteen-dollar range on a fee on the utility bill, and that'd make a pretty palatable.
Aaron, can you put the number graph back up with the amounts? How much each of the fees dollars raise?
And I'm just thinking outside here a little bit. You could do that, and then my thinking on levy is it's, it's somewhat lower than that. Or you got the option to try and operation levy for the full amount and sunset your fee on the utility bill. I mean, there's, there's a couple of ways to go there.
Thank you.
So this is, this was the ten-dollar fee?
Yeah.
And again, you know, some of this, we do still need to do a little more digging on and, and to solidify some of this based on feedback and, and such, but this is a general idea of what ten dollars would generate you.
And, and with that, what's, what's your thoughts on the per door for multifamily?
I think that's.
I like that, I think that's fair, yeah.
Anybody interested in trying to reduce that by some certain percentage, or are we comfortable with?
I think it's good.
Whenever I look at these, I look at the single family and the multifamily, how much is it gonna impact their.
Sure.
Their income and, and whatnot, their, their monthly costs. And for, and this gets just over a million, okay? And then I look at the levy data that you provided, for one million, and the average cost will be twelve ninety-eight. So this actually would be cost savings to, to the citizen, correct? Is that fair to say?
Well, and, and, well, you're still gonna have to do the levy, right? This, this gets you, remember the target and is, is somewhere in the two to two.
No, I, I understand it, I understand it.
Just apples to apples.
Apples to apples.
Two dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So it, it would be a cost savings to the average person, two dollars and ninety-eight cents. So I guess that's something that we, that I was thinking about is like, so if you do this initially, and then later a levy with, with what we had talked about before, like sunsetting the, the fee, I think that might be the solution, but I don't think people right now are ready for another levy. I've already had multiple complaints about the, the fire levy, just walking down, walking down the street. So we have to be very careful on how we craft this to move forward.
There's a lot of people who support that levy too, though.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Strong bunch, and you always, you always hear both sides. I think, yeah, I think the, the key to deciding how much a city service fee should be is it shouldn't, it, it shouldn't be something that we immediately have to supplement. It has to be a comfortable enough amount to get us to the point where we can make the levy decision, right?
I guess that's what, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is if we do initially the fee, make it where, where it's a.
Because the.
Digestible.
For, for the people out there that we represent on a levy is, hey, they can say no. And in five years, they can say no again if we don't use their money right. I know that's kind of a negative for us, because it leaves us a little insecure, but that's kind of how that system's supposed to work.
And some of this, you know, will be, if we engage with a consultant, they can kind of work through it with you, with us on what, where is that, where, what is, how do you strike that right balance between the two? And again, that, a lot of that's gonna be community input, their historical knowledge of, of levies and fees across the state. So there's, there's, there's definitely a lot of work to be done if, if the, to get to, to get us to a spot where we feel like we have all the information we need.
Well, doing a city service fee also gives future councils another tool to up, down, or what adjusted as needed, because the economy's gonna change. That's part of the reason you're seeing the, the defaults, the increased defaults. And when that changes, I'm sure you see it, so when that changes in upcoming years, that's gonna change what this looks like. So give future councils a tool.
It's a good point.
To, to be able to make those changes.
Well, and you'd, you'd likely tie it to a CPI, a yearly CPI. That way you were keeping up with it as you're moving forward. I guess the other thing to think about here is, is, you know, councillor Workman brought up the jail. Is that something that goes into a levy, or you want us to factor into this equation? Remember, our, our target was two, two and a half, you're gonna increase that to three and change with, with the, the implementation of the jail. So that substantially changes what we do here. So something to keep in mind. It changes.
Public safety speaks, you have, have a better chance of presenting to people something about public safety than just something esoteric, or hey, we need money to stay awake or stay alive.
Sure.
And that's more likely, it would feel like, to be more palatable every five years as they see that, hey, this is really helping our, our city in many ways to have our jail open. And if it's not, then we're.
Then they'll tell us.
Yeah.
I, I, I keep going back to the thought that, that, just for me, I'm, I'm more focused on closing that structural deficit we have. I'm all for opening the jail, but I also don't want to try to lump those two things together and have a chance of it both failing. Because right now, if you think about it, we have to close that deficit. We have to. There's no, there's no other option, so.
Part of that deficit is we're paying for a jail that's not working, it's not open. We're still paying for that. Everybody's paying for that stuff.
Yeah, but, 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 do you see what I'm trying to get at here? Okay. I don't, I, I, I think that, way, the way I'm thinking is, I'm gonna focus on closing that structural deficit, and then I'll look at the, the jail, okay? Because that, that is, that is, that's our ten-foot target right now, that's coming up and looking us right in the face. You know, in a perfect world, if we could come up with, you know, three and change and do all of it, of course I'm all for that.
Well, we have that opportunity if we want to do a twenty-dollar-a-month city service fee. If that's really where we want to go. I don't, but that's, I mean, if that's what we want to do.
No, I just, in my calculation, I said it before, I noted that if I had to pay four hundred dollars more a year to have the security in this town, I'd do it through my taxes. And, you know, I'm, I'm not no mathematician or anything, but that's not completely out of the realm of possibility with the combination of these things. In, for me, in my world and for what my bills are. I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'm just speaking as a citizen, how I'd feel about it.
Yeah, and if you add the jail, I mean, let's just say for round figures, we're three and a quarter. So that, that puts our deficit out at three and a quarter. At that point, you're probably, to, what was a three-million-dollar levy on this, Brandon?
Dollar-wise?
So that, that's what you would be looking at.
I was just looking at a fifteen-dollar service fee, and a two-million-dollar levy would, would cover that.
Pretty close, yeah? Again, there's multiple ways.
What was the numbers you said, Dan?
Fifteen-dollar service fee would make one point six, and a two-million-dollar levy would make us over three and a half. So it would cost about, what, forty-something dollars a month? Which, I don't want to minimize forty dollars a month to anybody, I'm not trying to do that. But for me, and a lot of people I talk to, that's, that's reasonable, to have the services they think they deserve and to have the city be sturdy.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna take off the city manager hat here real quick and put on the engineering hat, and don't forget that there are going to be some big projects that are coming in the wastewater side of things. We're doing everything we can to minimize that, but those rates have a high likelihood of going up in order to meet permit limits as they come out. So just keep that in mind as we move through this. That's my.
How could we forget? That's gonna happen either, either way, though.
It, it is, but, eh, eh, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, a, as a, as a, as a rate pair, we're all looking at this in a different light, right? So, well, that's not associated with my water bill, or this public safety bill, or the levy, or that. Everybody that is outside, all the citizens, the constituents, they're looking at it as what's it costing me? And I guarantee you, when they get their bill, my water bill is, and that's, that's how that works. We can label it out as much as we want, but that's what that, that's how that comes back to us. My water bill is a hundred and seventy dollars a month. It's like, well, not quite, but, so, just, just things to, to keep in mind as we move forward. I'm not trying to sway in any way at all, because I think all this stuff's probably gonna happen, or have to happen. But just keep in mind, I don't want any surprises, you know, and as we're walking through this.
You don't want to get shot either, right?
I'd prefer not to. I'd prefer not to, yeah.
Is that an option?
Pretty dark.
All righty, is there any other comments or questions?
So what do you want us to bring back?
Three and a half million dollars, please.
Okay. Go for the fifteen-dollar-a-month service fee. Look at the levy a little later on.
What, what if, what if we, I, I think it's, the, the levy idea is gonna have to happen, we're gonna have to make some decisions. We could tie all this into our strategic planning, right? But I think Brandon laid out how soon we could start collecting on that. A fifteen-dollar fee, let's say, and we can't start collecting till twenty-seven, I think that puts us in the hole. It doesn't, it. If, if we weren't able to collect on a levy until twenty-seven.
Oh, a levy, yeah, we won't, we won't make it.
Yeah.
But if, if you did a city, a city services fee of fifteen dollars between now and probably the end of twenty-five, you could, you could get there.
When would that be implemented?
I, I mean, realistically, again, there, there needs to be some conversations, but the city, a, a potential city, city services fee could really go in the next three to six months.
Six months, that's a reasonable.
That, that's a very aggressive timeline, let me be clear on that, because again, that, that requires interacting with the community, feedback, listening sessions, the, the works, but we could feasibly do it in, we'll say.
The methodology could be done in the next couple of weeks, but it's just how much, how much stuff we wanna, how, how many meetings do we want to hold? What, what, you know, and putting a message together, you know, I think we need a good message that the council needs to look at. We can put that together as well, but do you want to have several? We can put that together as well, but do you want to have several some of these service clubs with, with the message? I mean, you don't have to do any of that. You could say do it today. Well, not today because we don't have a regular session, so don't do that, but but it's, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of up to you guys.
So just, just for, for review sake, if, if we were able to get that through, for example, in December timeframe and on the books in time for January, again, very aggressive, but if we did, then, you know, that certainly pushes us out and gets us through the, the five years with that $15 service fee.
I think that, I hate to pay it more, but it's what's needed. And I think I'd like to have you come back with that and also with a layering on a levy for down the road. Not this year, obviously. I don't think we can do that.
No, it'd be tough.
Yeah. So I'd like to see what that looks like.
Well, why don't, why don't we do that? And why don't we bring you back some options of what a levy would look like if we, you know, based on a, let us do a little bit closer math. Maybe it's not 15, maybe it's 14. Let me, let me dig into that a little bit and see what that looks like. And then we could bring back some options on, you know, this is what the jail added to what your current city utility fee would be in order to make up that difference. This is the operations levy that you would need to do that.
Yeah, I.
And give a couple of options.
I, I, I agree with Dave that I would like to see the jail included because it's much needed. But the mayor's correct, our first priority has to be the structural deficit.
I agree.
And then the jail's going to have to be an added, added incentive if we can.
I, don't get me wrong, I really want the jail too. I just, there's so many hoops to jump through to get that reopened. I mean, the hiring piece, just the insurance piece, all of those pieces have to, I mean, it's not going to happen.
No, you don't just turn the lights back on.
Yeah, just, we can't run it the way it was run before, is what I've understood, which was having patrol officers checking. That's, that's not something we can do. So it will take a huge investment of council and funds to, to be able to open that. And like the mayor said, I think we need to address the 2 million before we get to the, the extra one. But I do want to talk about that extra one, but I want this two first, so.
Eat your vegetables before you dessert.
Sure.
I agree. I'd like to see the, the $15 service fee and a little more information on that.
Sure.
And then possibly pushing a levy for trying to get the jail open and stuff by either late '26 or '27.
Well, let us, let us look into that. One thing that, just when you were saying that there, the fire department did some, I call it messaging, what's, I always use the word, where they went out and polling, not really polling, but.
Survey?
Surveys, thank you. I, that, it's a hard word for me, so. But they did surveys upfront, and that's one of the things they use their consultant for and, and got a lot of good information from that. And that's something that we would probably do as well and, and, you know, to see where people landed on that. And that would give you a better idea if.
Better way to market it.
Well, and it'll also give you a better idea.
Jay says you're not going to get it.
So, we can run that. Yeah.
Am I the only one that doesn't love the 15? Like, want it a little lower? Is it just me?
Well, I, I've thought of that because you said 12 or 13, right? An average person's going to hear the same. 12, 13, 15. I think the, the message is more important, what the value is in it than the two or three different dollars a month difference, to me.
Sure.
20 is, 20 sounds aggressive. I get that.
It sounds very aggressive. And we pay the bills. I mean, you know, all of us pay our water bills too. It just seems like it's, it is a lot. I think the messaging will be very critical for this. You know, what does that $15 service fee represent? How much, you know, does it go to which department? And, and so people can actually see how their dollars are being split up. I know the city of Albany has something like that on their website. I think that's a, a really nice thing to like emulate here for us if we were to do something like that. But yeah, $15. I just think of my own, my own checking account and like, oof.
This slide right here, this for, if you haven't looked this up, if you look at the Corvallis, they only have two of them up there, but if you look on their, their website, there's quite a few of them. There's many fees.
Is that Corvallis, does that include the water bill or is the water bill a separate thing?
I think it's all one.
It, oh, comes on the same.
Comes on their, their utility bill, but the lost my train of thought. The, the messaging that we've got to make sure that we get out there is that city, city government staff has been constantly working on making our operations as efficient as possible. Because that's going to be the first thing that, that citizens will say is, is, well, it's overbloated government. Well, actually, no, it's not. It, it, you know, we've been constantly, from last year to now, working on consolidation of assets and, and finding new ways to do business and, and so we can, we can provide that, that survivability for, for Lebanon. And that doesn't mean just, we just cut a bunch of stuff. We're, we're just figuring out new ways to, to go about it. The staff has been working very hard on doing this. So that is one thing that you, the counselors, you, you need to go out and make sure that your constituents understand that. That this isn't a, we're not trying to fix a structural deficit because we want to add more stuff. We're, we're actually making stuff.
They got to know they're going to lose quality of life if we cut more.
Exactly, so.
Do that too much.
Yeah. And I know, I know for a fact that, that if we, you know, did like other cities and went, well, we're going to cut this and we're going to cut that and we're going to cut this, that, that.
Or just add to it.
Or, or add to it. They, they wouldn't be happy either. So that is the big talking point that I, whenever I talk to constituencies, is we're, we're really making city government efficient. We're not just taking away quality of life or services or anything, but things are going to look a little different, you know? I think the days of, or maybe not, I'm new to city government, that, the days of, we just get money and do whatever we want. Those days are, those, those days are, might be in the past.
Well, and one of the things that people need to realize is how long, how, how far down the road have we avoided coming back with a lot of fees or extra added things? We're probably one of the last ones to start looking at this.
Yeah.
And it's because the staff has done a good job with the budgeting and controlling that we've been able to do this. But with inflation, supply chain issues, everything costing more. People, people have to pay more when they go to the grocery store. Why wouldn't the city have to pay more when we go to the grocery store? And that's what we're fighting against. So it's pretty simple.
And, and the other, the other aspect that I wanted to convey to everybody is that, you know, we, we are, we always field the, the questions of, oh, our utility bill's the highest in the state and blah, blah, blah. And, and it is, it is higher. However, we also have a brand new water treatment facility. And I was looking at a comparable, comparable cities that was provided by, by Ron just a little bit ago. And, and Ashland's at the very bottom and they were like $68 a month. But if you go on Google and Google Ashland, Oregon, water treatment facility, you'll see that they're about to make a huge investment in a brand new facility because their water treatment plant's over 85 years old. So that's another thing that I, I constantly remind constituents of, that, that our systems are, are up to date. They're modern and, you know, without them, we probably wouldn't have made it through the drawdowns. Okay, so, yes, it, it is hard when you're on limited income to pay, to pay fees. So, but, you know, they also, people also have to, to understand those type of realities, I guess, of our system, so anyhow. Is there, did you get everything you need, Ron?
Would you like to do this in another work session when we bring this back on a council agenda item? What's, what's your, I mean, I think we could probably put it together.
Go ahead. You look like you're about to speak.
I was going to say probably another work session.
Yep.
Okay, we're more than happy to do that. When would you like to do that?
Sooner rather than later.
May?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, Brandon, Brandon's gone.
I'm gone.
Brandon, something about vacation.
He's not going to be playing.
I can't, I won't.
He's on vacation. Isn't it great that you can work remotely nowadays?
My gosh.
Unless you're in Mexico, then for some reason you can't.
I will be, actually.
Oh, will you? Will it be possible to be brought back in May? Is that a yes or no?
Probably not. Unless we did a work session on the first May meeting and that's going to be pretty tight to get everything put together. To give you some, give you some good information. We could do it on the June.
June? I'll, I'll be gone in June, however, I'll, I'll zoom in.
Okay.
You'll be gone in June. Good to know. I will be here in June.
Okay. And, and we'll just do, we'll just do it. Do you want to do it before the, the city council meeting in June?
Yes.
Sure.
I thank, really thanks for all the stuff you've done. I'm, I know I asked some questions, but I understand that you've, what you, that what the cuts you've made, I appreciate them. I appreciate the work you put into this.
I need you to ask questions.
It's not easy and I understand that.
No, and we appreciate the questions. Our whole goal was to have engagement because it's a, it's really, it's, it's your guys' call. We can bring this stuff to you and, you know, give you some examples and whatnot, but it's, it's, at the end of the day, you've got to set the policy.
I know we're at the close of this conversation, but I want to add one more thing. When we get down to the nitty gritty, I want to make sure there were like four meters that were the largest meter sizes and that we're doing special communication to whoever those
Sure.
commercial, like, just making sure we reach out to whoever those, those ones are. 370 that are going to get, could potentially have a new $375 a month.
I'll be paying 75.
And, and there's, yeah, there's.
High roller like you.
Oh, yeah.
Again, there's more methodology to this, right? So we're, it depends on what you frame a fee on the utility bill. Is it, is it for, I mean, and we have to really think about this. If you're going to go out for a public safety levy, do you want a public safety utility fee?
I did see that, that some of those fees are specific to services.
Right.
Yeah.
Or do you want a general? I mean, there's, 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 those are the kind of questions that, I think there's some strategy in that and, and not having a public safety fee and then going out for a public safety levy, I mean,
Right.
maybe there's some, there's some things to think through there and, and we'll want to think that through a little bit and, and walk that through that with you.
All righty, that concludes this discussion. We'll move on to the city council chambers.
I don't have it.
It's, it's on, it's on the same. Okay. Okay, council chambers. This one's pretty easy. I don't have a ton of information on it. I just wanted to get everybody's bearings on what we've done so far to kind of relocate from this building to the library community room. Some of the things we're trying to really be cognizant of are a meeting room that's very functional, but can still be used as a community room, can still be used as, the library can still use this room because they use this room for a lot of their events and whatnot. So those are the things that we're looking at. So I just wanted to run a few things by you. Did that come up? It's going to take a second, Brandon says. That's okay. We're still working through some of the IT stuff and what that's going to look like. But if we can, once we get these up there and show you kind of some different ideas that have been drawn up by a couple of my staff. Boom, boom. Okay, first one that you're looking at there is basically the council table that you have in here right now, utilizing those with that setup. And it's, it's facing north, I'll call it. So that's the big screen back there in the library. You can kind of see how the library's laid out on the other side. We looked at that. I think that takes up a substantial amount of room by using these existing tables. And because they're not movable, to use the room for anything else. So we went to another option, which was, hey, can we get a dais where we have everybody around the table? And switch this one right there. Nope, down, keep going, Brandon, back, back the other way. Back that way, this way. This one right here. This is one that the department because they, they actually do really good work and it's, it's much cheaper than going out to other places. This one's, basically everybody's back would be against the, the windows there, not really all that great. It, I, I don't think the setup is as good if you look at the ingress, egress. And then the next one we looked at was more of a U shape. And this one would work. It's going to take up quite a bit of room in there. But I think it was a total of probably 16 feet of stationery if you figure the five-foot gap up there. And, and so it's out into the room about 16 feet. So we looked at one more option. And that was to take this one with, again, facing north, a little less of a U shape, have two basically movable staff tables. This configuration shows eight people at the, the dais. And then two staff tables. We could make that nine to try and accommodate planning commission. And we think that this is the best way to go. What that, what that means is if we have an eight or a nine, basically it's you folks and the city manager that would sit at the heads of the, the dais up there and then you would have staff, police chief, city attorney, city recorder, and then potentially we'd have another staff table for staff that were presenting or, or there. Is there, does, guys got a preference before I take this down too much further?
I sort of like that one there.
Yeah, so do I.
Okay. The goal is to give the library as much space as possible and this, I think this setup here with those being movable does that. If, if you're comfortable with that, we'll start getting some hard prices on that and, and start figuring in the IT and whatnot. It's going to be a little slow because we've got to probably go out and get three proposals for the IT stuff. We've got, we've got some ballpark stuff, but it's really hard to decide. I guess the other question is, is everybody comfortable using their iPads or laptops at a council meeting rather than putting screens out in, that, that's a big cost.
Well, there'll be screens for the public though, so they can see.
The big screen will come down, will be behind you.
Okay, oh, so they'll still be able to see, yeah.
So that, that's, they will be able to see that. The, the biggest issue would be for you all to be able to see like this up there on the board right now.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm starting schlumping mine in.
And we could.
I, I use mine all the time, so.
Yeah, as long as, as long as you're good with that. The other option was to put screens in the dais, but that's, that's an expense that I don't know that we want to, we want to get into.
The, the whole thought process, but should we go, probably go into this? Whole thought process behind this move is using our assets as efficiently as possible. So I had people reach out to me and it's like, well, I'm against it. It was a, it was a community room and, you know, da, 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 da. And what we found is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, the community room was very minimal in usage. So with a move like this, there'd be some initial cost upfront, but it would, I think the benefits outweigh any concerns in that we would have maintenance cost savings on this building. We would also be able to possibly lease it out or, or vacate the building totally. We were consolidating city assets. This is some of the bullet points I sent to a person. Updating the city image. You know, I know that's a small one, but it is there. Providing more seating, yeah, increased accessibility and parking, that's, that's a big one. Big parking lot down there and accessibility for ADA and everything else. And, and I even put this one on there, improved and discreet bathroom, restroom facilities. They're outside, not right by where everybody's sitting. So those are just a few of the, the, the bullets that I sent back to this person that had concerns about a possible move. Now, will there be some upfront costs? Now, will there be up some upfront costs, of course, but I think the cost savings in the future. Are you willing to go into maintenance of this building?
There's, there's a lot of maintenance that's coming up, and we're, we're in the process of looking with the state to see what what it would take for us to sell it because it was paid for with a grant, and and we can sell it. Uh, we just don't know how much, if any, of the grant we would have to pay back. Uh, I, oops, I think Kelly and I are of the opinion that it it was kind of intended for a travel hub. And if we could give it to somebody or sell it to somebody that was going to use it as that, then that would be more of a use and we shouldn't have to pay it back, but we're dealing with the state and also federal law, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. So we're still working through those. There's nothing that says that we can't lease it, you know, as we're doing now. But that, that's kind of where we're, where we're headed with that.
Had, had somebody approached me, asked me, and it could be the same person that Ken's referring to, to ask me if we'd considered the senior center library that I, I don't even know what that looks like. I don't know if that was feasible. I don't know if we considered it.
No, it's it's not quite as big, I think, as this room. But and and we haven't, no.
I just, I said, I, I was honest, I said, I've never been in there. I don't know what
What, what, which room are you talking about at the senior The stage area?
I got the same email.
Yep.
The acoustics in there are horrible for something like meetings like this. And I really don't like the idea of trying to set up something on the stage so I can look down on everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think that sends the right message.
No, I didn't really under
It would have to be, if we did something there, it'd be have to be something that can be removed all the time.
Yeah.
Because they do use that stage. That's not practical.
I think her objection was that we'd be taking up the space in the library, and I don't, I don't think that's really an issue.
I I looked at that and the amount of space that you're gonna lose since we'd have the removable tables is pretty minimal. You're still gonna be able to put pretty much the same amount of folks in there. But it gives it, in my mind, it gives it the added versatility of using it for other organizations, using it for presentations and that sort of thing. So I I think it expands rather than contracts the use.
Yeah, with that right there, you're gonna lose about 11 feet of the room because we, the dais wouldn't be movable. We, we thought about a movable one, but I think that the wear and tear on moving it all the time is probably
This one doesn't move, is what
This one does not move, but the staff tables would move, so you're
Staff tables are movable, so
Yeah, so you're basically
Space for people.
Uh, five, five, you're 10 feet from edge to wall.
Yeah.
Right, so you're gonna lose 10 feet, and we could probably, I'd have to look at it, but we could probably get away with four feet behind and and gain another foot there.
I I think, you know, over the years, there's been, I think, three council meetings where I was like, we are way too full right now. You know, when we have people that are on either side of us too, it's not a super comforting feeling. So I think we've outgrown the space. It's been well-served and well-lived, but it's, I would really like to see us eventually move to someplace larger.
Okay, we will, that's, that's really all I needed. I will get together some stuff and we'll probably bring back, I'll probably wait till I have more information as as how we're doing with the grant and and what our IT costs are, but we'll, we have budgeted next year for the IT costs and we'll have to figure out the the dais piece. We can figure that out as we go. Quote I got from the Corrections Department was somewhere in the 18 to 20,000 dollar range to build that, so we'll see what we do with that.
Did you, do you have everything you need for both subjects?
I do.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. If I don't, I'll always wish I did, so
Okay. Is there any final comments or questions?
Okay, thank you.
So we'll, when we adjourn this meeting, hold up.
This is something else we won't have
Yeah, we won't have to deal with this anymore. Not that close.
It's that big, it feels that close.
Okay, so we'll, we'll adjourn this meeting and then we'll take a 10 minute break and then we'll, we'll reconvene in executive session, so.